Good evening, this is the Planning and Zoning Commission, February 11th, 2013. Planning and Zoning Commission, may I please have the roll call?
Connie Yoshimura.
Here.
Stacy Dean.
Here.
Terry Parks.
Here.
Dana Prus.
Here.
Peter Mulcahy.
Yes ma'am.
James Ferguson.
Here.
Tyler Robinson.
Here.
John Spring.
Here.
All right, thank you very much, there are no minutes for the meeting under Special Order of Business and Commissioner Parks, would you please do the disclosures?
Yes ma'am chair. Commissioner Spring.
Yes, I, for the record, I was not a member of the commission on the meetings of January 7th, 2013, June 11th, 2012, and September 17th, 2012, and will therefore be abstaining from voting on resolutions 2012-028 revised, 2013-003 revised, and 2012-047 revised.
Thank you. Commissioner Dean.
Yes, for the record, I was not present at the September 17th, 2012 meeting, will be abstaining from voting on resolution 2012-047 revised.
Thank you. Commissioner Prus.
Same with me, as Commissioner Dean was here on the 17th September, so I'll be abstaining from voting on resolution 12-47 revised.
Thank you. Commissioner Robinson?
None.
Mr. Ferguson?
For the record, I was not present on the June 11th, 2012 meeting, and will be abstaining from voting on resolution 2012-028 revised.
And Commissioner Mulcahy?
None.
And I have none. Commissioner Shimura, get it out a minute.
In the matter of case 2000, S. 11864-4 and case S. 11864-3, at last week's meeting, I was recused from participating in those two items.
Thank you ma'am chair.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda item, resolutions for approval, may I have a motion, Commissioner Parks?
Ma'am Chair, I make a motion that we approve D. 1 and D. 4A.
Thank you very much, that motion has been seconded by Commissioner Dean, is there any objection to the motions? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. Moving on to the regular agenda, we do have two resolutions for approval, an amendment to a public facility site plan review for baseball field amenities at South Anchorage High School, and a resolution for a fire station number three. Commissioner Mulcahy.
Thank you ma'am Chair, I move to approve resolution 2012-028 revised, an amendment to a public facility site plan review for baseball field amenities at South Anchorage High School, turn to view East Subdivision Track B1 located at 13400 Elmore Road.
And it also for resolution 2012-047? Or are we doing those together or we're not, we're doing them separately?
My motion is...
All right, all right, thank you.
We can continue.
Yes, thank you. That motion has been...
Do you need me to clarify that this is revision of the July 2nd, previously adopted on the resolution 2012-028, previously adopted on July 2nd, 2012?
Yes.
I'm going to read the rest, to include under paragraph B, condition of approval number three. Key point.
All right, thank you very much, and that's seconded by Commissioner Parks, is there any objection to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. Next motion. Commissioner Mulcahy.
Now we'll do 2012-047.
Thank you.
So I move to revise resolution 2012-047, previously adopted on October 8th, 2012, to delete the appeal sentence in the last paragraph.
All right, thank you very much, may I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Parks, is there objection to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. I will now turn the gavel over to Vice Chair Parks, and for the record, I am leaving the building.
Madam Chair, we have one more under F. 5A.
Oh my goodness, I am...
One other case.
We, we do. Thank you very much, and that is an important one. Case 2013-016, review and recommendations for Anchorage School District 6 year capital improvement plan. This is not a public hearing. Commissioner Dean.
Madam Chair, I had some suggestions to pass along to the Assembly regarding the capital improvement plan.
All right.
And I was wondering if we all could discuss these issues?
Absolutely.
And one of those is, I would like to see the city include, or school district include, previous projects that were closed out in the previous year. I would like them both, the design and the construction projects, not just construction. I'd like to see the original cost of the project, and then the final project cost, so we can see a comparison of budgeting, were they budgeting accurately, how much have things changed over the period of time, and then how long the project actually took to complete, both the design phase and the construction phase.
Because the longer the delay, the greater the cost.
Yes.
Right, all right, thank you. We had that discussion at the meeting, and I appreciate you following up on that. We have, do you want to make that motion now, or shall we continue with the discussion? I have several people in the queue.
Let's continue with the discussion, yeah.
All right, all right, thank you. Commissioner Spring.
Yes ma'am Chair, there's, on page four of the memorandum that was sent to us from the school board, it states that detailed enrollment projections and other tables and charts are no longer included but will be developed in the future. And I'm fine with that, I think, in terms of saving paper, but especially in this particular CIP list, which doesn't include any new schools, especially new sites for new schools, so that's fine. But I would like to request that when this is available, that they send it to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Since we do deal with land use, I think it'd be of interest to us to see what their projections are, and from one area of the city to another. And perhaps in the future, if there is a CIP that contains a new school, that they might submit that, Connie information, detailed information at that time.
I appreciate those comments, I did highlight on page two where the decrease and increase in enrollment was going to be, and it would have been nice to have had some more demographic and geographical information.
Yes, and I didn't bring this up at the work session, but it did seem like some of the projections, that the projections were pretty uniform throughout the city as far as the increases in the enrollment, and I was a little curious about that, but since there's no new school site or major expansion, I thought that probably wasn't really relevant, but at this time.
But change in school boundary districts is quite controversial to accommodate the sort of changing population, yep?
That's true.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Ferguson?
I just wanted to support Stacy's request there for the information, if we don't measure something, we can't learn from it, and I think it's important for their use as well as our use, that they look at their historical costs to see if they are in line with their estimates.
All right. Commissioner Parks?
Thank you, I would also like to see that, I think it's important that we include that in our motion as we forward it to the Assembly. Commissioner Dean would like to do that, I think that would be the appropriate place to put it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, I agree with that. Are there any other further comments? All right, Ms. Dean, would you like to make a motion regarding all that? Thank you, looks like you have the support of the commission.
Through the Chair, I would like to make a motion to support the CIP, case number 2013-016, and make several recommendations to the Assembly forwarding on this plan. In the future, one of the points that we would like to see included are the costs of previous projects that were closed out in the last year, both the design and construction costs broken out separately. We would like to see both the original project costs and the final project costs. The second item we would like to see too, I'm going to defer to John Spring for that, he did mention some good points related to that.
Okay.
Yes, I guess the, I wasn't sure that it really requires an amendment or a specific condition of approval, but I will try, I'll give it a try, I guess. That in the future, when the CIP is submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which includes an improvement for a new school, or construction of a new school, or expansion of an existing school, that detailed enrollment projections and charts be submitted in conjunction with the CIP.
All right, thank you very much, this is sort of a combined amendment or recommendation, it was seconded by Commissioner Ferguson, I just want to make sure that you are in agreement with all of that.
I'll second both halves.
Second both halves, the first and the second half?
Yes.
Yes, Madam Secretary. Ms. Dean, the secretary has pointed out that you did also include in your previous remarks the timeframe for completion, and whether or not there was additional overruns as far as the time for completion.
Yes, thank you, that definitely should be included too, you know, what the expected time was initially, and what the final time actually was. Was it a two-year project that turned into a six-year project, for example? Thank you.
All right, thank you, and would you, design and construction?
Design and construction, both, thank you.
Right. With termination and completion at the time of a CO?
That would be wonderful.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ferguson?
I would be glad to second all three halves.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you ma'am Chair, I will be supporting the main motion as well as the amendments to that motion. I did have a question myself, and I wondered if members of the commission could remind me. The first two years are shown as budgeted numbers in the $50 million range, and then in the third, really through six years, they jumped to the $80 million range. And I remember hearing the information at the work session, just simply that it was doing that, and the cost may be high because it's very far out. But I really don't see that, any sort of discussion, and part of me asking is to ask if I'm missing it, but to me, there should be some rationale or some narrative to say why we're jumping considerably in the years three through six versus the first and second year, because it's not supported by, you know, it's not supported by the demographic change or anything like that. So I just would like to see some rationale, if I'm approving a six-year plan, why the jump? Are we putting off commitments this year because we're hoping our economic outlook is better several years down the road, you know, or just, you know, things are just stacking up?
We probably don't have the opportunity to answer that question tonight, but certainly we could, if you wanted to put it in the form of additional comments or amendments, we could ask for, in the future, additional information.
Or perhaps that, you know, I guess my recommendation would be, and I can make this as a motion, but I would move that in the packet that goes forward to the Assembly, the school district is clear why there's a significant jump in years three through six compared to the first two years.
All right, thank you. So that is an additional amendment. Okay, now we have four, and are they all in the form of recommendations that are all going together? They are. All right, thank you. Commissioner Ferguson?
I thought I heard the applicant say that they did not expect to see the amount jump, that they might defer projects further down the road as they got more information, that the applicant, I thought was rather clear that they expected to stay in the $50, $55 million range going forward. And I think that's what I heard the other night.
Commissioner Parks, and then Tyler.
The other thing that I heard them say, Tyler, was that there was some bonds that would be paid off, and that they felt that, at that point in time, they would set the construction budget to do those major modifications in some of those schools at that point, which would have been the long-term plan all along. Because I asked the question, why the big jump? And that's, and that's what Mr. Abbott had told us.
And that makes sense, I guess, I would just ask that it be clear, I mean, to me, that's something that in a narrative should be called out and say, here you go.
I think it should be at least annotated somewhere, so you could get a picture of what it was, I don't disagree, but that's what the reason was.
All right, so the secretary is typing furiously, so I'm going to consider that a fourth half. Since we haven't restated the entire motion. Do you have any objections to that, Commissioner Robinson?
No.
All right, thank you very much. All right, are there any other comments? All right, so Ms. Dean made the main motion with four additional amendments, recommendations going on to the school district. Commissioner Ferguson, you seconded all of them?
Yes.
All right, all four, we're now down to quarters. All right, thank you very much. Is there an objection to the motion? All right, seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. All right, now I am leaving. I am, I'm...
Oh, I get it, yes, yes, yes.
Look at our new chair over here. Sitting straight up in his chair.
No.
Looking all prim and pop, Robert, looking over here. He's sitting straight up in your chair, looking...
That's because I'm sitting in Connie's chair, that's the only way you can do it, it's way up in the air. I should have moved my own over here. If we can get rid of the, we can deep six the school district plan.
And we are now ready for the unfinished, for the public hearing portion of our meeting, and I'll read the rules for it. After the staff presentation is complete on the public hearing items, the Chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established by the commission's rules of procedures. Petitioners, including his or her representative, 10 minutes, part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives groups, community councils, PTAs, et cetera, have five minutes, individuals have three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission, you may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the Clerk's office within 20 days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. Any individual may request written findings from the commission decision within seven days. We will now open the public hearing for case number S. 11867-3, Potter Creek Development. Staff has a report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for amendment to a preliminary plat previously approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on June 6, 2011. Specifically, it involves a removal of conditions number 7, 8, 9C, 17E, and 17F relating to the common access drive as outlined on Planning and Zoning Commission Resolution 2011-21. Just to give you a brief property history, as was stated just a second ago, the plat was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on June 6, 2011, to subdivide three tracks into 30 lots and four tracks with the vacation of a portion of Potter Valley Drive and a 20-foot utility easement. And it also include variances from AMC 2180-010 for dedication of streets, and AMC 2185 Table C for interior streets. That petition was accompanied by a rezone of the property from R. 3 SL to R. 6, both were approved. On July 23rd, 2012, the Public Works Department granted a variance to increase the maximum road grade for Potter Valley Road from approximate station 26+50 to 36+50 to a 10.5 percent grade. This is an increase from the previously approved 10 percent variance along the same stretch of roadway granted October 23rd of 2008. Petitioner states that the primary reason for this request is that the need for common access drives is eliminated with the approval of the road grade variance for Potter Valley Road. The road grades are now such that each lot can have safe access via a singular driveway to each lot. The Traffic Division has no conceptual objections to the removal of the requested conditions. However, there are substantial concerns with a number of proposed breaks in the guardrail as the subsequent lengths of each, and the subsequent lengths of each break. This concern was expressed in an email from the traffic engineer to the petitioner's representative on November 30th of 2012. I'll read the email in part. "My primary concern," quote, "my primary concern is with the number of breaks in the guardrail and the length of each break. As it was discussed in our meeting on November 20th of 2012, the consolidation of driveways for lots 1, 2, and 3, and lots 8, 9, and 10 does not reduce the total number of breaks. However, Dan Southard and I agree that the reduction is not significant, and we will not object to removal of the condition. The Traffic Division has requested several conditions be required with the approval of this request. Those conditions are addressed in their comments and in department recommendation. As the Traffic Division believes that safe access to each lot can be achieved with the satisfaction of the requested condition, staff does not object to the petitioner's request to remove and modify the aforementioned conditions, subject to conditions 1 through 6 as outlined on pages 8 and 9 of your staff packet." Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Petitioner is present, I assume?
I have a question.
Mr. Grenier?
Mr. Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was a little bit slightly slow on the button there. Okay. Yes, if I could ask the staff a question? Staff, a couple questions on your presentation. One, it seems like the main issue is the change in the variance from 10 percent to 10.5 percent. Seemed to have made a difference in the need to consolidate the driveways, and you mentioned that it was, now it was safe to access it. I was wondering, the 0.5 percent change in the grade made it safe, is, I don't understand what the original safety concern was, and I'm not sure I understand how that changed with that slight variance.
Through the Chair, Mr. Spring. Perhaps the petitioner or the traffic engineer can speak to the safety concerns that were addressed previously, and then how those change with the road grade variance. With regards to municipal code Title 21, there is no requirement for shared driveways. As I understand it, this was a self-imposed condition, and the petitioner has found a way to safely provide access to these lots, and they are wishing to amend those conditions now. So maybe the, Mr. Grenier or Ms. Marmillo can speak to the engineering behind it.
And I have one more question, that's similar to that. Potter Valley Road, I believe, is a collector road, correct?
Through the Chair, Mr. Spring, that is correct, however, it's a rural collector.
I believe, let me see if I got this straight now. Collector, whether it's rural or otherwise, the function of a collector is to provide access to a neighborhood, and supposed to minimize access to individual lots. That's, I don't believe it changes with respect to, from a rural collector to any other type of collector. So I was wondering what your opinion is about this, the impact of these additional driveways on the functioning of this rural collector?
Through the Chair, Mr. Spring, you are correct, it is a rural collector. In an urban collector situation, access would be prohibited. Since this is a rural collector, we would like to discourage access or limit access. I don't see these, I think there's six lots, or seven lots, I don't see these seven lots as having a profound impact on traffic within the subdivision. Yeah, does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Any other questions? And how many minutes would you like to have for rebuttal?
I'd like to reserve five minutes, please.
Mr. Chairman, my name is David Grenier with Triad Engineering, representing the petitioner this evening. With me this evening is Mr. Rick Davidge and Mr. Trevor Edmondson, representing the What I've handed out this evening is the location of the 11 lots off of Potter Valley Drive, and essentially, the section that we're looking at is a little over 3,000 feet, so we're looking at 11 total drives now over the 3,000 feet. A brief history to expand on staff's presentation. When we first submitted this particular project, the cul-de-sac that you see actually accessed onto Potter Valley Road. And in that configuration, whenever you have a cul-de-sac or a street intersection, you're required to have a 5 percent grade across that intersection. And then you have transitions of the grade in and out of that particular intersection. We subsequently revised the layout which the Board Planning and Zoning Commission approved last year, and now access the cul-de-sac off of Grease Drive. What this did was lowered the grade, not only the half percent, the 10.5, the half percent variance was for 1,000 feet, which dropped the road by five feet. By removing the, by removing the cul-de-sac and having it come off of Grease Drive, we were able to drop the road another seven to eight feet. And what this did, we had fills in the range of over 20 feet on our original application, so those were excessive, in our opinion, for driveways coming off of Potter Valley Road. So that's where the common access drive submittal, which was part of our original application, that is why we felt it was important at the first submittal. So with the revision of the cul-de-sac, and with the half percent change for 1,000 feet that lowered the, lowered the driveways, lowered the road grade enough to where we were able to get driveways in at a 10 percent or less grade for the actual driveways. We presented this request to the Rabbit Creek Community Council as well as HALO. There was no objection from either of these groups, and basically, we've...